We ask that you fill out the yellow form. You saw these when you came in. Please read the instructions and indicate the agenda item, if any, that you wish to address, and we will introduce you at the appropriate time. At this point, I'd like to hand it over to Dr. Frank Alvaro for recognitions and delegations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. I am excited to kick off our first recognition tonight by asking our Woodbridge Elementary teacher, Susannah Siderly, to come on down.
Yay!
Stand right there. I have a little gift for you, so don't forget to give you that before we run off. Appurbiatically, we create videos to highlight certain staff members who exemplify our Profile of the Learner app. Our Profile of the Learner is our list of skills, attributes, and habits aligned that we strive to instill in all of our students by the time they graduate from Alamo Heights High School. It's our student-facing vision in the world. But part of the things that we have to do as adults is we have to exemplify that profile ourselves. And so, we like to spotlight certain of our employees that exemplify that, and to do that, we have a short video of Miss Siderly. Let's watch.
Hi, I'm Susannah Siderly, and I power the profile by engaging socially and globally. How does cooperation, working with others, help us engage socially and globally? And what does it mean when we say we ride by looking at others? In this classroom, we engage socially and globally as the way that we uphold our Be the We creed and embody the Alamo Heights Profile of Learn. So, in order to engage socially and globally, my students start off with mutual respect for others and our treatment agreement. Our treatment agreement is something that we co-created at the beginning of the year that values diversity as a strength by allowing every student to contribute what they bring to this classroom and what they need from this classroom in order to learn and grow while feeling safe. Things are bad with you, it's things are bad with you. Your legacy is the way that you make other people feel. So, thank you so much for sharing. Every student that comes into this classroom brings a unique fund of knowledge. As a teacher, my job is to know those students so deeply so that they feel empowered to let that diversity shine in our classroom. Come on, yeah, yeah, yeah! All right, lots of energy. He's my background singer that I have in my head, and I need some lifting up. Oh, God, they're using your expertise Pokemon to make a creative connection. Nice, Mary. The way our students understand their relationships and responsibility to society is embedded in our liberatory core values, acts of service to our community, but also in just saying yes to kids. My students are naturally curious. He's just really trying to make sure everybody understands and takes risks. Some of these students I had as second graders. She wants to help everybody make a mark on the world, whether it's by herself or without help, and I think that's really cool. They have a beautiful will to see the community around them. We all decide rules, not just the teacher. It makes it that everybody feels welcome and so that we can engage with others. I really just say yes to their ideas because students naturally want to make this world their place and feel a lot of responsibility. And it is okay that you love to do that. We still think you're normal.
Let's go through around the block. And so, as you noticed, the different banners that scrolled through that video are all parts of our Profile of the Learner. There are six different domains, and I see Jerry over there. Jerry, you can see that's the Principal of Woodbridge. Shout out to Woodbridge, Be the We, and all the character stuff you guys do, and that Susannah exemplified in the classroom as well. So, I would like to ask you if you have anything to say since the time you do it.
Oh, sure. I just want to say thankful so much. This is actually my last year here in Alamo Heights at Woodbridge, and I went to school at Cambridge, Woodbridge, Junior School, High School, and my experience being a teacher here and staff member has been formed it and grown so much, but really, it's just been the greatest honor to serve the community that gave so much to me. So, thank you.
She moved away. She's got a job as a structural coach up in the Austin area, so we're mad that you're taking her away, whoever's taking you, but we're happy for you.
Thank you so much.
Yes, congratulations. Before I call up our next honorees, I'd like to explain the award they're getting. It's called the Spotlight on Excellence. Periodically, we shine the spotlight on employees that work often behind the scenes to help contribute to our tradition of excellence. And this one's actually a pretty interesting one because you'll probably, if you're at campus, you will recognize these folks, but you will not understand what they do. I'll kind of explain that. And so, we like to shine our spotlight on excellence on our Alamo Heights ISD campus data clerks and our district person of many hats, Tricia Corry, come on down. All you guys, come on up. Stand right here. All right, and so, when you see them, you're like, oh, yeah, I've seen that person at the campus. And so, I thought that person answered phones and receptionist stuff. Well, these folks here, let's actually have you introduce yourselves, and we'll go down, tell us who you are and where you work, and you can even tell us kind of what your title is if you remember it.
My name is Tricia Corry. I work for the district in the technology department, and I am the technology student and management information systems analyst.
I'm Ashley Stewart. I'm at Woodbridge Elementary, and I am the data clerk slash attendant slash registrar.
Hi, my name is Scott Rodriguez, and I am at the junior school, and I am the data councilor and secretary to the faculty.
Hi, I'm Michelle Bayer. I work at the high school, and I'm the registrar and data clerk.
Hi, I'm Veronica Choa. I work at Howard. I am the data clerk, register, receptionist, and AP secretary.
Hi, I'm Gina Larracruz, and I'm at Cambridge, and I'm the data clerk, the registrar, the secretary for the AP, and data clerk and receptionist and whatever you need.
It's not that they have poor memories and they're not schizophrenic. They just do a lot of different things. And so, one thing I think that it's really shining the spotlight behind the scenes if nobody really understands and really wants to know is that we get our funding from the state of Texas based on a bunch of data that we have to submit to them regularly. And that data has to do with students enrollment, where they live, a whole bunch of information about students. It has to do with attendance, and if that's not accurate, we don't get funded the right way, and we get a lot of trouble. And so, the attention to detail is mind-boggling, and I'm trick-or-treating sometimes because you're trying to work, and then people are calling you or asking, hey, can you deliver this lunch? Hey, can you call somebody? You're like, yeah, I'm trying to get this detail right so that my pager doesn't call me to say, there's a mistake. And so, the notion of that's just P E M S, that's a really important job, and these folks have an intention to detail and customer service as well. To do both at the same time is mind-boggling to me. Now, and that's at the campus level. Now, Tricia especially has an interesting role because she interfaces with all of these folks at the campus, but plus, she's kind of like that liaison between what TEA gets and all the stuff that they turn in. And this year, she's just taken a whole other step, only to 180, into deeper into that P E M world to help us as, well, just to help, I was going to say as Mike gets older, but that would have been fun. So, I didn't say that. And so, we really appreciate Tricia especially, but all of you guys, man, talk about behind the scenes. I know Jamie couldn't be here tonight. Jamie Lockland, our Director of Technology, he's at a conference, but he sings y'all's praises exponentially, and so I know that we all do as well. And so, that's why we're shining the spotlight on you today. Congratulations. Make sure you take plenty of pictures after outside. Is there a big summer submission still? Is that a sore subject?
It's dirty wood.
Sore subject, too soon for it. All right. Our next recognition, I'd like to have these three men come up, and we'd like to recognize state tennis team bronze state medal winners. Come on down. We'll meet you in the corner. That's too weird for not to be old, but we'll do you first. Tell us who you are, what grade you are, and then you pass the mic, and we'll hand with your ghosts.
My name's Robert Pons, and I just graduated high school.
My name is Walt Patel, and I'm going to be a senior next year.
And I'm Larry Oxford, the tennis coach.
Tell us about this team, Larry.
Well, they're kind of an accidental doubles team. Let me get down here where you can see more of their height. Robert was playing doubles with the number three guy on our team. Ballen was playing doubles with the number four. Robert's partner dodging the ball in the fall, fell, hit the court, got a concussion, and went on port of call. And so, I had to mix up the doubles teams, and Ballen played the add court, he's got a great two-man backhand. Robert played the deuce court, and they just started beating everybody. They barely lost to the team from A M Consolidated, the state team tennis semifinals that went on to win state. They lost 6-7-7-6, Sukkot, and then they beat the Highland Park team. So, in the spring, Ballen was playing number one singles, couldn't quite decide whether he's going to play doubles or singles. First tournament of the spring, invitational season, they won easily without losing a set, but Ballen hurt his left wrist. So, that kind of ended that question. Ballen was not going to play singles. So, there they are, an accidental team that went on to win district without losing the set, winning one regionals without losing the set, and made it to state semifinals.
Thanks to you all, to your parents for all their support, to Coach Oxford for the great narration, but also for all your support, Larry. And we want to also say, Robert, you're going off to Bryson Falls.
Correct.
So, congratulations to you. And Ballen, you're still here with us for another year, so we're looking forward to another great year for you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
That concludes our recognitions for the evening. We're about to turn into the business portion, so if you're here just for the recognitions like these guys who are going to go play tennis, you guys can head off right now if you'd like, but if you're here for the business portion of the meeting, stay put. So, we'll give you guys a moment also to leave. Congratulations and take plenty of pictures outside. Thanks, Susannah. Yeah. Okay. Okay, we will move on to section three, Citizens to be Heard. A couple of ground rules, and then we'll start calling you up. Just in order for this to be organized and follow state law, a couple of things you need to know. One, you'll have three minutes to speak. We can't answer any questions. We can't respond at all. We just sit here and listen. That doesn't mean we're not interested. We are very grateful for you all taking your time to come speak to us tonight, but by state law, we just have to listen. It's limited to three minutes per person. Alicia will hold up a card when there's one minute left. Then she'll hold up another card when time is up. We ask that you stop when the three minutes are up as a courtesy to everyone else. We have several speakers tonight, but as a courtesy, we have to keep you all with three minutes. And I hate to be rude, but if I have, we'll cut you off if we have to. So, please stop at three minutes. We ask that in making your presentations, don't name individuals, either students or district employees. Try and take all of your remarks general as opposed to identifying individuals. With that, Cliff Widdingshall, you will be first, and then the next up will be Sean Caparaletti.
Just go ahead, sir. I don't think it's on.
It'll be a lot tighter than it's a lot of time.
Okay. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it. Part of my profession is I go to a lot of board meetings. I'm a K through 12 architect, so I understand what you do, and thank you for your service. I'm here today as a parent of a volleyball player, but I want to talk about basketball and girls' volleyball. We're not understanding why both were moved to second period when they were in the last period for many years. A couple of reasons why. One, as you can imagine, you can sit out, you can practice, you continue your practice after school. You're not worried about getting to a class, you're not worried about getting to other lunches, how do you shower? The second and more important reason is they're going to miss 25% of their class time with this, the last period. Last period used to be volleyball, basketball, so they would miss that. They travel to Dripping Springs, Bernie, Curb. But we have a far district, right? And so, how are they going to make up that time? That's a huge part of the chunk of their class time. And so, I just, we don't understand why it was moved with the reason. We had a group of parents that met with some leadership of a high school, and we were told, we'll fix it with the bus schedule. I'm not sure how that's going to happen when you play at 5:15 in Dripping Springs or 6:30. We were told, well, we'll separate freshmen, JV, and varsity. Well, that separates the sense of community that these girls have because they cheer each other on, because a lot of people don't go to a basketball game or volleyball game in Curb or Alberta and battle the traffic. So, that's another, that's a concern of ours, if you separate the teams for cheering for each other. The other is, we were told, it works at other districts in San Antonio. It probably does, because you're playing at Coal Mender, you're playing at Hero Stadium, you're playing at Paul Taylor, you have a 15 to 20-minute drive to get to those facilities. You don't have to go as far as we do. The other thing I want to talk about is we're not quite sure what this personalization period is. We're wondering if you do, too. It's 180 minutes a week that our child's going to be in with either a teacher or a coach. What's the agenda? What's going to happen? Why was this put in the year after COVID? It's a pretty big change. What did you vote on? Did the board vote on this change? Really look into it because we're confused about it. We're not quite understanding, and it's also affecting athletes. Athletes are getting the brunt of this. How does a multi-sport athlete going to be able to handle the personalization period as well? And is this the right time, right after a pandemic? And finally, my main reason for being here is, one, to protect our daughters. It's going to be a lot of added stress. How do they figure out to get a successful practice in second period to go back to class? How do they get to the games? How do they cheer each other on? Well, we're one high school district, and we're being compared to how other school districts do it in this city. The personalization period is being compared to how it was done in San Diego, actually, which is a client of ours. They have a lot of high schools. We're one high school district. We're supposed to be different. And so, there's plenty of time to fix this. There's plenty of time before school starts in August to get the girls' volleyball team back to last period and to really take a deep look at this personalization time. What's the true agenda of this? What is the reason for happening? Again, I appreciate all you do. Like I said, I go to a lot of board meetings. You're volunteering, and I appreciate your time, and we're just here as a concern. Thank you.
Sean Caparaletti, and then the next up will be Haley Beckel.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me? Yeah. Well, I guess Mr. Widdingshall stole my thunder, but I would reiterate most of what he said. I'm a parent of a volleyball player as well, and just here with what my concern is about this proposed block schedule, or propose, I don't know if it's already set in stone, but it does pose a serious concern for just generally the logistics for students, parents, teachers, coaches, and the shifting of how your schedule is structured. This is actually the first I've heard the day before yesterday that this was going to be implemented. I'm really concerned about coming out COVID, implementing this new schedule that's going to, in my opinion, have an adverse effect on athletes specifically. Moving their athletics period into the middle of the day really inhibits their ability to focus on the sport while then basically getting ready for their academics. Implementing this personalization period, in my opinion, I'm still not, I haven't really wrapped my head around exactly what it is, but by having the coaches be in charge of that while also mixing in the necessity for the students themselves to get ready for the rest of their academic day, I think it's just too much to put into, onto them, and I think it's overall just an adverse effect. Logistically, like Cliff mentioned, having athletic periods squeeze into the middle of the day and not on the tail end, I think, is makes for a logistical nightmare. You mentioned us being a one-school district and having to travel so much to, for district games. Multi-high school districts don't really have that issue. So, I think it's something that the board should take in consideration before implementing such a large change to our everyday schedule because, I mean, we're all getting back to normal and trying to acclimate to our new world, and so to have such a drastic change like this in August and September, I think it'll be rough on pretty much everyone. So, thank you.
Thank you. Haley Beckel, and then next will be Helen Norris.
I'm going to read mine. I'm not as eloquent as you guys are speaking off the cuff, so thank you all for allowing us to do this. We do appreciate your time, and here we go. My name is Haley Beckel, and this will be my daughter's third year as a varsity volleyball athlete. I have many concerns about the new schedule at the high school, specifically how it relates to JV and varsity volleyball. While there are many questions about how the schedule came to be and why the schedule is being implemented after such a stressful year and the inequalities between athletes and non-athletes, I will focus on a few specifics that need to be addressed. First, this will be the third year my daughter has had a different schedule in high school. Her freshman year was a traditional 1-8 schedule. Sophomore year was a version of block with alternating athletic period days, and now this. Change is difficult, as we all know, but it seems we are implementing unnecessary changes annually and without regard to the mental and physical health of our children. In addition, for the past two years, the volleyball team has not had a home gym and has been forced off-campus for practice and games, and they did so willingly and without complaint. Throw in a pandemic and the disarray it brought, and you have a team that has endured and persevered despite these challenges. Why then are we continually asking them to sacrifice? In anticipation of being brought back on campus and into a home gym, we are now asking these athletes to accept a new schedule that moves their athletic period from the end of the day to the 2-6 period. This is a period that has not ever been typically assigned to athletes, and for good reason. During the fall semester, which is volleyball season, there's approximately nine away games, and as you know, our district of play is spread out across Texas. Typically, the team will need to leave school between 2:30 and 3:15 in order to travel to the away locations in a timely manner. With the new schedule, the volleyball athletes will need to leave their fourth, eighth academic period in order to compete. That means they will miss about nine class periods, which equates to 10 and a half hours of instruction, which is about 27% of an academic class. Okay. Other athletes are not being asked for this sacrifice, and so I believe this is unacceptable. In addition, it's my understanding that the sports that are scheduled for the end of the day are off-campus sports that do not require gym space. Instead of a more normal, less stressful year without a pandemic and a shiny new gym, we're making the volleyball athletes' year more cumbersome, stressful, with a schedule that just doesn't make sense. I beg the board to review the procedures of how the schedule came to be and to move athletics out of the 2-6 period. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Helen Norris, and then Sarah Feldman will be after.
I'm not sure if I need to say my name again.
Yep, you're good.
I'm Helen Norris, and I appreciate, obviously, the time here. I also appreciate that I live in a district that when I had a problem last week, when I became aware of the schedule, I had the privilege of meeting with the athletic director, the assistant athletic director, and the principal of the high school. So, first and foremost, I'll say that is a privilege of living here, and I appreciate the time that was put into that. And we made some advances. I got some questions answered, but I was still left with some more questions. And I know you don't have any spare time, and you probably don't want to tell us, but I'm a girl in this school, I'm all women, and that is be curious, not judgmental. And I'm here to be curious. I'm curious about where we are going with our students. I am curious why I feel, as a parent of four children at every campus this year, one, I feel tired, but two, I feel empathetic for the teachers that are going to have to deal with the schedule and the ramifications of the personalization period. But more than that, I feel for my children because I push them, because I want them to do well. And we taught Profile of Learner 2005 when I first gave birth to you, and I don't want to get emotional, but I'm here to tell you that we push them and we expect a lot out of them as expected on and off the court, and I do not feel like they're having the opportunity to thrive. I feel, I understand, I'm an educator, I work in SAISD, I understand that we need to serve a large portion of the population that needs attention. I am all for that, but I do not think it's a mutually exclusive decision. I think we can serve the high performer with the low performer. We are Alamo Heights. We can do this, and we can do it better than anyone else, but it is going to take time, and it's also going to take this camaraderie, this understanding of where we're coming from. In this particular instance, I felt more than ever before that I was met with a shielding of the schedule because in every conversation I had, it was, I don't want to share this with everyone, but I'm going to tell you. I don't really want this to be public knowledge, I'm going to tell you. The reason why there's not 500 parents that are athletes is because they don't know. They think it's a simple block schedule or traditional schedule. Specifically, I'm going to leave you the calendar for this girls' volleyball. I'm going to leave you when buses left for the same games last year. Traffic isn't going to change if anything gets to be worse, so I think that'll be a good place to start. If you realize the 12 hours of instruction, 10, 12, call 15, one is too many for an advanced student to miss a class time, particularly going to a block schedule where we're trying to put two classes in one. I don't want my child, who already stays up all night trying to be successful at everything she does, to be penalized for being an AP student and being an athlete. I don't want her to miss any time. I don't want 12 hours, I don't want two hours. So, please take a look at what we're proposing. Let personalization be equal for getting into study hall to every student and athlete. Thank you.
Sarah Feldman is next, and then Lisa Fox will be after.
Hi there. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you all. I was here at the last school board meeting, and I noticed that the majority of the speakers during this portion talked about how and imply that we live in a very racist community, and that really upset me. And I moved here from Los Angeles almost nine years ago, and I feel that this community does an excellent job of respecting and treating our neighbors of different races, background, ages, and sexual orientation very fairly. And on my block, we have representatives of all of those groups I just mentioned, and we treat each other like family. And I also feel this school district does a good job of this with programs like Snack Packs and Pals. But that being said, I don't feel it's the school district's job to teach my kids social and emotional skills. It's their job to teach my kids academics, and I don't want teachers with different worldviews teaching my kids these skills, social and emotional. I want them to be taught not what to think, but how to think, both objectively and critically with room to question. I want them to be taught not what to think, but how to think, both objectively and critically with room to question. I don't know if you all saw it, but in the U.S. News and World Report recently came out that Alamo Heights High School was ranked 25th in academics in our city, and this did not include private schools. We're clearly taking the focus off basic academics and failing our kids by doing so. This brings up something else. I'd really like to know how much of our tax dollars recently went to the equity audit performed by One World Consulting. This audit is very personal to me because my fifth grader was pulled out without my consent and on a Zoom call that was videoed by the two founders of One World Consulting. This prompted me to do a little research on them, and with a quick Twitter search, I found the following. Dr. Kelly Brown, professor working towards equitable outcomes for children through research and teaching, hashtag racial equity. Okay, this bothers me a little because I'm all for creating equitable opportunities, but we cannot guarantee outcomes for these people. She recently retweeted an article that paints critical race theory in a positive light. Our governor is recently mating the teaching of CRT illegal. On May 6th, she retweeted the following. Question: When does racism show up in public education? Answer: Always. If you are a white person stating that your white colleagues are nice people, does not preclude them or you from being and acting racist. Did anyone else do a quick Twitter search before we hired these people? These don't seem like appropriate people to be doing an equity audit on our school. They already come in knowing and thinking that we are racist. Thank you.
Lisa Fox is next, and then. I'm sorry, I'm going to put it's carbs, race? Carbs, race? Okay, then Lisa Fox first.
All right. So last time I came here, there were a lot of people, and they brought their posse or whoever they represent. So this time I brought the people I represent, my children, my four of them. They were, I don't know, some over there too. All right, I'll go away. I was a mother of four before I could legally drink. This is the type of people that live in the district. I've been here for almost 13 years with my kids. I went to Cambridge, I went to Woodbridge, I went to junior school, and I went to high school. So during the summer, the first week starts from summer, and my child was like, Mom, how can I make $375? I'm like, Carlos, why do you need $375? She's like, I want to participate in the summer programs. I'm like, what summer programs cost $375? It was a PE, the PE class, that y'all already have stuff for, costs $175, and then another PE class was $150. I was like, that is ridiculous. But y'all don't do offer scholarships for the summer programs, which parents, some parents don't know about, but yes, they do offer scholarships. But the kids that get scholarships are only allowed to go to Week Three of the summer programs, which I think is ridiculous. And then they give me a call June 11th, which is a week before the Week Three starts. So most of those classes are already filled up, so my child only had the option of two classes. You know, I think the summer programs are awesome at the Alamo Heights. I think it can introduce kids to things that they don't think they like till they try the class. So I think that when parents of my stature in this community that cannot afford to send their children to the summer programs have another option of the summer programs, maybe through the parents that get the free lunch like me have a different price, I do not know, but I think that we should have better opportunity for parents like me to send their kids to the summer programs so that they can, you know, get, know if they like to cook, if they like to do archery, if they like to do PE, they like to do chess, you know. When I have four children and they all can go to the summer program, I can't just send one because then the other ones are going to be like, oh, why can't I go? So you're talking about $700 literally just for two kids for one week. That is, that is too much for me as a parent. That does not make $200,000 a year or $100,000 a year. So I'm just asking you guys to look into the summer programs, maybe create something for parents like me of my income base to be able to send our kids to summer programs and not be a financial hardship on us just for summer programs. Thank you for your time.
Helen Norris Brenner sits next, and then Lori Richmond.
Hello, my name is Carlos Reyes, and I live in the Alamo Heights District. I just wanted to make aware of what's going on in this district, in this school with bullying. My children have experienced bullying and racism in this school. I do want you guys to be aware that is an issue and it is a problem. I understand about these other programs and studies and what they want to do and change the curriculum and whatnot. I'm not for that. I understand that. Alls I really want is more understanding. We are different. I am a minority. My children are a minority, and there are a lot of minorities. Well, not a lot here, but there are a lot of minorities. And they are treated unfairly. They are looked at differently. They are disrespected. I myself, being a part of this community, have spoken out and have had people personally send me ugly messages. I live in this district because I am on the app that's called, was it Neighbors or whatever it is? Nextdoor. I'm on that app. I've had people personally change their profiles to a person pointing a gun in his picture to try to intimidate me. That does not intimidate me. However, that makes me worried for my children, their safety, and the other minorities here that see that kind of disrespect here. It absolutely angers me to sit here and say, there is no racism. That is not true. It's not true. No matter if it wants to be accepted or wants to be heard, it is not true. I'm not somebody who just wants to sit here and do something drastic because of it. I understand people have their differences. Our differences is what makes us great individually. I get advantage because I'm Mexican. I get advantage because I'm a man. Those are facts. There's nothing that I can do to change that. I can't change that I'm Mexican. Nobody can change that they're white or black or Asian. You can't. But what we need to do is understand each other and work better together. I have talked to people at this school, and I've talked to them. My version is I talk at them. They did not listen to me. They allowed me to say words and just look at me and spit out whatever they wanted to and disregard what I said. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Lori Richmond?
Good evening. Thank you for listening to community members speak on issues that are important to us. I'd also like to thank you for making masks optional on campus now. My daughter is at Summer at Heights this week, and I love that kids have a mask option. My daughter is not wearing a mask, but her best friend is, and they're having a great time. Tonight, I'd like to bring up critical race theory. I am aware that Governor Abbott expanded implementation of public schools, but I am concerned that it will come through under a different name. Teaching children that they are either an oppressor or they are oppressed is unconscionable. Treating children equally is a much better way to model equality and undo whatever preconceived notions they may have. Getting to know different people is the best way to realize how much we all have in common. Being told we are different inside and out is not only false, it will have long-term negative effects on our students and the communities they inhabit as adults. It is 2021. I don't know anyone who cares about race, sexuality, or gender. The more it is kept in the forefront of our kids' minds, the more attention will be brought to it, and they may start to actually think that people who are different from them are too different. It's like we are purposefully trying to dishonor Martin Luther King Jr.'s dream and legacy. Schools should not teach our kids that skin color is more important than the content of their character. In fact, Alamo Heights School District teaches the eight character keys from kindergarten in order to instill goodness within our children. Why teach them that none of that matters now? It's all that matters. There is already a major focus on bullying in our district through David's legacy. If we can keep focusing on bullying and not finding out more ways to convince our children that they are different, our kids, our district, our community will be better off in the long run. Thank you.
Everyone who spoke today, we are sincerely grateful that you took time and came. We value your input. We are now going to move on to item four of the agenda presentation of items for possible action. The next item on the agenda is A, for goal to AHISD profile of a learner. We'll wait a couple minutes for folks to review.
Emily, if you want to come, get your position. There you go. There you are. This has been a long time coming for Emily. She's been asking me about this trip for some time now, so. And if you're more comfortable sitting, hold the microphone.
You can stand or sit. And at the outset, since we're going to hear about a bunch of trips, it's really nice to be getting presentation of school student trips again.
Yes.
Beedle.
I saw the list. I didn't hear about it, so it's pretty wonderful. Hi, I'm Emily Rangel. I teach culinary arts at Alamo Heights High School. This will be my third trip with ACIS, which is a company who Alamo Heights has been using for overseas travel for as long as I can remember. My last trip was 2019, and during that trip, I planned this next trip for 2021. Typically, I take a trip every other year. I'd be one of the only trips that opens to any student, even a grade they want. Any grade, I should say. There's a typical senior trip every year, and then languages take trips with ACIS as well. But I think I'm the only one at a high school that does this. Who wants to go? No, even parents. So it's pretty neat. We always have a lot of kids really interested and a lot of parents interested. This trip was planned for 2021, so it has moved to next summer for July 11th through 19th. And I typically choose July because a lot of students go to summer school in June. And this is to Dublin, York, London, and Paris. And the students chose this when I was with them last time, so it's kind of neat that they flipped through the ACIS catalog and they chose this. I think a lot of students would be interested in it if students themselves chose it. So there's an overnight flight, and then we come back on the 19th. I love ACIS because somebody travels with us and is with us the entire time. So I feel really safe. They're from the area. They speak the language. It's like having a travel agent with you the entire time. So I feel great about it. I love ACIS. What's super neat and sets them apart is what's included in the price is flights, hotels, breakfast, and dinners in every single fun and learning event that we do while we're there. And so some of the fun trips would be in Dublin. We have Lebonnecon Museum. Those tour in York. We board the 180 mile per hour Eurostar to Paris, which is super cool. The kids are like, it's super cool about that. We have the 10K lesson in Paris as well. We also get to go to the Louvre and cut the line since we are a school trip. Cut the line and get up as close as you can, get to Mona Lisa, which is super awesome. We get to see the Westminster Abbey, Westminster Abbey, St. Patrick's Cathedral, and much more. So I have no fear that we won't get filled with this trip since the kids are itching to get out as well. Our goal is at least 12, and for every six students, there will be adults because every six students, adults can go for free. So I love that. We can control the kids. My first trip, I had three students, which was amazing. The next one was 12, and we had two teachers to go. So I do have lots of teachers that are interested in going with me. That's great. And I'm just ready to get the word out and start talking about this and see who's all interested. Do y'all have any questions?
What is she, I mean, I'm new to this. So what are you asking of us? Just we approve the trip?
Yes.
Well, it's not approved anymore from the board. We can change that. And so it's just a presentation for y'all, so that you can ask some questions if you have any concerns, clarifications.
Does anyone have any questions?
Oh, what's great about this year is that ACIS changed their protection plan. So parents can pull out, they need to, because of COVID and things, four days before we leave the trip and get a full refund, which is the first time they've ever done that. So that's great. I know that that's going to be kind of a sticky situation with parents is the payment and they get refunded. It happens wherever we go, because I know parents are all handling things a little differently, so we'll just have a lot of time to.
And do we offer scholarship opportunities for this?
Through ACIS there is. We don't have to school, but ACIS is a company that, yeah. So we do just remind you that it is a school-sponsored trip, and so it's school standards and of expectation. We are so busy throughout the day. There's no room for shenanigans. And so the kids are exhausted when they get there, and a lot of parents are like, why don't they sneak out of their hotel room? I'm like, they're fast asleep before I am because we're exhausted every day. So I don't, again, it's my third trip. I've never had one problem, so I'm really happy. Thanks for your work with Miss Together.
Thank you very much. Our next presentation is the trip, Girls Golf National High School Golf Association invitation.
Good evening. Thank you guys for what you do. As a result of winning the state championship, we were invited to play in the National High School Golf Association Tournament in Paranormal, Carolina, which if you're not in the golf world, that is a golf mecca. That's, that is one of the places that the US Open, Ryder Cups, and it's quite a place. And quite an honor to be invited. I accepted the offer. In sports and dealing with the UIL, there were some, you have to be careful in terms of where we're funded. Can't accept any school money. Girls can't even carry their Alamo Heights bags. They can't wear an Alamo Heights shirt. It's kind of, kind of a thin line to walk with the UIL. But they're also very, very much in support of us going. We were successful in a GoFundMe program in which we received a lot of very generous donations. We were fully funded, myself, Coach Bredner, our assistant, and then my wife will also be going. She's the female piece of that chaperone group. And we have six girls going. All of their parents will be attending also. Monday, practice round two today, round one, round two, round three, which Thursday, Friday, and back home on Saturday. Pretty basic, got the drive thing. I'm looking forward to the competition. I looked today at the teams attending 39 states represented. I thought that was really cool. So I decided my girls are getting that, that type of exposure nationwide. And I think it will also be a thing where there'll be, this is a type of event that girls can put on a resume, send to college coaches, and it will be very well recognized by them. So they play good, they'll get some recognition for that. So I would love to answer any of your questions.
Are they only state champions that are represented?
Only state champions.
Are they all our district? I mean, like 5A?
So actually, there's, there's three teams from Texas going. And that is Andrews, which is a 4A team, and they are, I don't know how many state championships they've won for the year to March. And then, and they were, they were the four state champion this year. Heber is the 6A state championship winner, and so there'll be three teams from Texas.
So if we meet both of them, that'd be worth it all.
We've actually, Andrews attends our tournament here, the Swing for the Cure.
Well, good luck.
So I know probably, Dr. Shara and Coach Redeman have probably just like nailed this down a hundred.
a hundred times, but I just want to make sure when it's a small group and we've got parents and families going, it can get a little fuzzy as to why we're there. And I just want to make sure that everybody knows we need to model the character and the way that we compete at tournaments for our lines. Actually, plenty of times I have family vacations in Carolina. We're going there to call the tournament.
It's a, it's a, kind of liken it to a bowl game, college bowl game. You have programs that to get invited to a bowl game is rewarded, and they kind of truly see it that way. And then you have programs that we're in that position. We need to go win. And I think from since the last day of school until right up, like, that girls coming back from national tournaments on Saturday, we're going to meet briefly on Sunday when we leave Monday. So they're, they've been all over the country already playing, so they should be. I, I thought about, do I have a practice? I couldn't have had a practice. They're all over the country playing, which is, that's as good a practice as you're going to get. They'll, they'll very definitely be in that framework.
And I noticed on the itinerary, you're not playing Pinehurst number two?
So Coach Berger is the only one that's going to get to go play Pinehurst number two. They offered that for the coaches and assistants, and the girls could have played it also. It was pretty expensive. And then as a coach, you're kind of stuck between, back to, back to what David mentioned is, is it a true reward or you're going there to win? Pinehurst number two is considered one of the top five hardest golf courses in the country. And so do you put them on that for a practice round and, and take a beat down and then go try to, go try to perform at your best and just, just to win the girls? We, we're going to do our practice round on one of the courses. We'll actually play.
Well, good luck. Congratulations.
Appreciate you guys very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have the Alamo Heights High School Choir Student Trip.
This is Erica Mossos. This is David Short. He's going to stand in for David tonight. Thanks for being here.
Hello. My name is Erica Mossos. I currently serve as the Director of Orchestras at the high school. I come to you tonight to talk to you a little bit about a trip that David Short and I are planning for March 2022. This will be a joint, combined trip with the choir and orchestra group. As part of the trip, students will experience world-class performances, tour museums, and explore culturally and historically significant sites that are specific to New York City. We both believe in student travel being a wonderful enrichment to our students' education at Alamo Heights. The trip will be five nights, beginning the weekend before spring break, and we are doing this as a means for students to not miss school. Highlights of the trip include performances at Broadway Musicals, an attendance at the New York Bill Aronik for the orchestra, a tour of the National September 11th Memorial and Museum, Liberty and Ellis Islands, a tour of the United Nations, Radio City Music Hall, workshop led by experienced Broadway performers for the choir and a performance for the orchestra at St. Pauli Apostle Church. The price estimate per student is $1,900 and includes air and ground transportation, hotels, sightseeing, most meals, and all tax deductivities. Prior to the COVID-19 pandemic, our choir orchestra families were anticipating out-of-state travel to New York City in the spring of 2021. In a recent survey, families of both programs enthusiastically responded with interest to, with interest in a March 2022 trip. The cost of the trip will be broken into five things spread throughout the fall semester. Students will have an opportunity for fundraising at the start of the 2021-2022 school year, and both Mr. Short and myself are working with a fundraising person to, to, to kind of plan something that they have, through their experience, has been a high profit. The price point of the tour aligns to previous out-of-state trips that the music programs at Alamo Heights have taken in the past. Each program will have at least two directors traveling with the group, as well as at least one chaperone for 10 students. Chaperones will be taken through a training on how to appropriately and effectively care for the well-being of students while traveling through the guidance of our teachers and our travel agency, Bob Rogers Travel. Bob Rogers Travel has been selected based on the choir's previous experience with the company on this exact trip. Additionally, the company is working with vendors to ensure that we are following all COVID protocols set forth by airlines, hotels, and all involved. To be secure, Bob Rogers has also provided a trip assurance program that works with vendors to ensure participants will be refunded as much of their payment as possible, which is 100% minus security deposits. If our trip is canceled due to circumstances beyond our control, such as changes in the COVID-19 pandemic. Thank you for your time and your continued support of Alamo Heights music programs. And I can answer any questions if you have any.
How many students typically go on this?
Between the two of us, we're anticipating around 70. 70 students.
Wow.
Yes.
That's awesome.
So we've not done a joint trip like this in my mind. We've not done a joint trip like this for...
Oh, no, no. This will be the first time we're, we're going together. We're going together as part of the travel agency, but our trips are actually backwards. So we'll be staying at separate hotels. We'll be doing the same things, just my stuff at the start of the trip is his end of the trip, and we'll just be flip-flopping. And they will be having a Broadway workshop with experienced performers, and we'll be performing in New York City. That will be advertised in the public in New York. So I'm excited to put Alamo Heights out there, outside of San Antonio and outside of Texas.
So this is technically a presentation for number three and for number five.
Right. I was going to say it covers five, too. We won't make you come up and do it.
Is that over spring break, the week before?
Yeah, it's over spring break.
We'll start the weekend, start our spring break, and go into the spring break.
Wow, that's...
Spring break really that early? That's what everybody's asking?
March 3rd, spring break.
Yes.
Quick question. I noticed in your letter, you break down the cost and the checking dates and all that sort of thing, and all the opportunities for fundraising, which I think is great. And I would just encourage y'all to promote the fundraising part so that certain, any children aren't discouraged because there's a price tag on there and they haven't seen a dollar amount of comment. And I want to make sure that everybody feels the opportunity that this fundraising is for me, and I can go.
Exactly. And once we kind of sign our contract and all of those things, we'll have a parent presentation with the travel agent who will be on the trip with us. And myself and Mr. Short will also be able to present at that point the fundraising opportunities to cut the costs for, for parents.
So to clarify, you're leaving March 3rd, which is a Thursday evening?
Yes.
And so you're traveling Friday, Saturday, Sunday of the spring break prior week?
Yes.
You were giving us all, we're not ready for spring break.
I don't know. I'm ready for spring break.
Oh, you're correct.
So just curious, is the, so we're talking 140,000, right? I mean, muscle minutes. It is, when you say you're going to fundraise, would the presentation be to the families? Like, if we raise 50 grand, it's split evenly? Or is it the people that really need that $1,900 will be given?
Sure. So the fundraising opportunities will be, students will fundraise for themselves. So like, if we're selling tumblers or their popcorn, the amount of money that, or the amount of sales that the student gets will directly get that into their personal account, and their $1,900 will come down. So it won't be spread across everybody. Each student will be able to work for themselves, if that makes sense.
It does.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thanks, Eric. For the next presentation, it's Dr. Maria is going to present instead of Rebecca Marshburn.
Okay, so next we've got the Alamo Heights High School ACIS Student Trip to Spain, and we have Dr. Maria Kubal to present, please.
Hi, I'm here on behalf of Rebecca Marshburn. We are going to do the same activities of the teacher for the trip. The purpose of our trip is like to give to the students an opportunity to connect what they learned with a real-life experience. So they are going to be visiting some regions in Spain that we teach in class about art, culture, and literature. Then we will visit cities and towns in Spain that have a significant importance to the story, culture, and art we have studied in the classroom. At each stop, we will discuss the relevance of what we are visiting to what has been studied in the Spanish classes. Also, we will have a tour director with us for the entire trip on Suelan in Madrid. The itinerary will be from July 3 to July 12. She is like thinking of like between 10 or 20 Spanish tours, including some parents or siblings.
Maria, is it any level Spanish student?
She didn't open before. I think in the AP classes. Because they can speak Spanish there, and they can, like, they're going to understand very well. I think there's...
You typically aren't taking reading or anything, so I was just wondering.
I think he's thinking in the AP classes.
So it's only open to students in Spanish? It wouldn't be, like, if someone else wanted to go that's not taking Spanish, it wouldn't be open to them?
No, only students that are taking Spanish classes.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. All right. In our last presentation, we have Public Education in the San Antonio area. Mr. Bobby Blough is here. Bobby, welcome.
Good evening, Gulf War numbers.
I was going to say, it's kind of different for you to be on this side of the table, right?
It is. It's enjoyable, to be honest.
Yeah, not to be...
And just sort of same with the theme, what I'm going to talk about briefly is how you can take a trip here in San Antonio to... Before I do that, just a quick background for our trustees, our superintendent, our staff at the public this year. This is being done by the Bear County School Board Coalition. For those that don't know, the Bear County School Board Coalition started in 2005. It's only for trustees in Bear County. So we count the 15 official ISDs that identify with San Antonio and Bear County, plus five that have a portion of it. So it's an organization, we establish a corporation, so it is a Zone 501(c)(3) that's established just for us to collaborate, to work together, and do things like I'll talk about in just a second. In addition, the other major part of it that I'm going to talk about is GoPublic is actually under the Bear County School Board Coalition. I mean, you may not be aware of that. GoPublic is a campaign. It's not a separate corporation. It's very important advocacy now that we're doing, but it falls under the Bear County School Board Coalition. So some of the recent things that we have done in the coalition itself is, we have had opportunity to advocate for our state and actually for our nation. Just to give an example, when we, last year, were trying to figure out how to return to school and some other things, the state wanted to get, from a school district perspective, what our thoughts were, what should occur policy-wise and funding-wise, et cetera. We came together to represent San Antonio and say, "Governor, this is what we think would be best." Okay? That's an example of activity. The reason why we're able to do that is because there are very few other regions across the state that can get together and really advocate as a whole group. So I think that also, we said that also, but that's one of the values that we have as a coalition. Our latest adventure, to keep it short, that I want to talk about is we've been working for two years on producing this book entitled Public Education in the San Antonio Area. Actually, listening a little bit earlier, I prefer to call it This is How We Do It, but that's a different story. But the book itself, well, it actually does. Again, this was done by the trustees as lead, and we had the Education Service Center that helped us out, Texas Higher Coordinating Board. District contacts such as Patty have been always very helpful. So it was a lot of individuals and organizations that helped out. The chapters, if you haven't seen it yet, they include background about the county data. We didn't do each individual district. We wanted to show San Antonio, Bear County as a whole. Each of the district had the opportunity to do highlights about its district, two or three pages in after guard. The other key thing, and I said two years, so we got interrupted by, I think we know all too well, but we talked about the first 60 days of the pandemic, is trying to document through pictures on this is what we had to react to, food service, health, et cetera, et cetera type of aspect. And then it gives a whole history and aspects of GoPublic, too, so that's finally documented, too. So that's sort of the content. This is book number two. We did one 10 years ago. It was then more focused on fact. This one really is meant to be a marketing highlight to talk about the districts themselves. So that's the booklet. We have it, as you think you know, on Amazon and other places to be able to attain for purchase. So we encourage those that would like to do that. Couple other things to let you know. On Friday, we're actually going to be presenting. We, as trustees in the San and Bear County area, at the TASBSLI, and this will be the major focus, is talking other districts, how you tell your story, how you work together to build that. So that's at 115. That we'll be doing that part of it. And the next week, we have a GoPublic, next Thursday. I hope you all have heard about that. We want to get all the trustees and everybody else also involved to get our, annually we have a meeting just to update everybody and talk about the future direction. Thanks to a couple of folks. I definitely want to thank Dana. She's been on the GoPublic steering committee and has been really, really giving a lot of feedback and helping out with the direction itself, so that's my quick question.
So I just want to make sure that everybody knows Bobby.
We do. That's okay.
Yeah, we can start with that. So he's a long-term serving trustee in Northside Independent School District, but is just a true champion for public schools across the state, but is especially in this area and in the county. And it's very unique to have a situation, an organization like this that you've led and structured and kind of shivered all of us through to promote this kind of unique partnership. And so I want to just make sure all of you, you know, new trustees, know who you are.
Oh, that's okay. Don't worry about that part of the impact.
I might take a quick comment. I want to thank you for your service this past year with the coalition in particular, because the value that you delivered to us as trustees was huge in terms of having to navigate so many different voices, so many different concerns, trying to get touch points to a lot of different decision-makers and policymakers. So, you know, I don't know that we had an opportunity to thank you, and so I'm glad to do it, you know, here during our board meeting, but thank you for everything you did over this past year.
Well, appreciate it. And we in Carcass, all trustees, who want to be a part of it, but thanks for that.
I was wondering about the book. What is the target audience? And whose hands are we hoping to get these books into? I know you said it's on Amazon. You know, what population would be going in? Would be buying it? Are we distributing it in different areas, trying to persuade parents to go public? What's the...
Yeah, it's actually, an act of fish, we're going to start next week to build kickoff in the campaign. But we do want parents to have it. We want libraries to have it. We want the administration to have it. We want folks that are coming in new to the city to have it, because it gives a good background of other public ISDs. We want the leadership in San Antonio to really have it, so they're stating the true facts of what's occurring within our county, et cetera, as well as all the school districts. So to be honest, we sort of open it so that it's a very broad audience, both individuals as well as organizations.
Thank you. Any other questions?
All right.
Always. Thank you very much. All right, our next item is consideration of adopting the AHISC District of Innovation Renewal Plan for 2021 through 2026. Dr. Frank Alfaro, you presented on this repeatedly. This is it.
That's right. That's right. I'd like to, Bobby's still on, but I wanted to give him a shout. I was working with him. That guy is on a lot of boards, and he's a lovely servant. I was working with the Youth Work Institute of San Antonio, YOSA last year. And I was asking, what is his child's weight? He's got a kid in YOSA. I said, "Well, you know, you have this servant, and somebody asked me to be on it. I forgot who asked him to be on the board." But I was like, flunked, that his own personal child was playing soccer somewhere, and he was trying to help this youth work. So he's just a great public servant. Very humble as well. Well, I'm going to actually do a little bit of a formal thing, because this is actually the consideration where I'm asking you all to do. And so for the general public as well, the District of Innovation is a status that the legislature passed several legislative sessions ago that was designed to give school districts increased flexibility in a variety of different statutory mandates. And the idea was that if you gave districts flexibility in certain things, it allowed them to be more innovative based on whatever their particular community mission was. And so when this first came about, we actually jumped on it, and it was actually, we did it in December, so it was kind of like a mid-year thing. But we developed our plan, and it was approved by the trustees, and we went through the exact same process that I had to follow this time. And so what I want to remind everybody in the public, as well as the trustees, is that we have already gone through one iteration of the District of Innovation. The school board at that time approved it at that time, and now I'm simply coming back to renew it because it's only good for five years. And so the statute requires that you have to renew it for the next five years. And so technically, our old one isn't up until December of 2021, but because we knew we had to do it mid-year, we went ahead and got ahead of it to do it now. So now we'll be on a regular school year cycle. Next slide. Now, there are very specific exemptions you can get from various statutes, but they're all, they also say each of certain statutes you cannot get exempted from. And they're what you could imagine, right? They're all the ones that we wish you could exempt from, but you can't, like finance, certain curriculum requirements, state assessment, accountability, anything that the feds require, things like that, like district governance. You can't get a waiver to say our board doesn't have to be called us, which you could, but. Go to the next one now. There are some very helpful ones that we've used over the years, and I want to highlight those. I don't know if a lot of people recall this anymore, but there is a state law that says you can't start school before a certain time. Well, this gives us the flexibility to do that, and we've done it for several years, and our community really appreciates being able to start school earlier than the law requires, so that you can get out early, right? Now, the other thing is that there's a lot of red tape that we have to do with various rules and things, like class size waivers. And so we know typically that in Spanish immersion, which is a great program we've had for several years, it's really important to have a critical mass of students in that all the way through, so they can benefit from having a critical mass of kids. And so you have to build it big early on, because it's something people will move out, that kind of thing, and you naturally plan attrition going up the ladder, like when they get older, like in the junior school and high school. And so you have, you have to build it like twenty-five, twenty-six lower. Well, because we do that, traditionally you have to get class has waivers, we don't have to do that, and that saves us a little bit of time administratively. There you go, came back. I'm not even talking about the third one, it's just this. The statute requires that you designate what behavior coordinator on campus, but we all know that that's not the way we do this, right? Every administrator on the board works with counselors and teachers to do it collaboratively. And so we don't have to name one person, we can do it collaboratively. We also have a tiny areas in some really areas where we can have the opportunity to have a great teacher who just happens not to be certified. And so with this one, we specify two areas, and only two areas, that we would not have to have a state certified teacher. And the first is languages other than English. And so the great example of this is somebody who moves over from France, who actually taught university in France, but is not certified to teach French here, but is a great teacher. Well, this allows us to have a French teacher that does that, and we employ that ourselves. Likewise, in career and technology education classes, that's a prime example of somebody from the field who's not traditionally a teacher, but who really has a lot to give to the students. So the example there is somebody who was a restaurateur, a cook at a restaurant, has the opportunity to teach in our culinary arts class along with Emily Red Hale, and that person is not traditionally certified, but does a really great job. And so that flexibility, we've been forced enough to use. And so I do want to underline to everyone that we only waive from certification in those two specific areas, not in any other areas. Then the next one that's been really useful for us is that there are rules about teacher contracts, and if you have experience coming into the district, the normal rules are that you only get one year probationary contract, and then you have to determine whether that person will term contract or not. Typically, if you're a brand new teacher, you get three years of probation. Now, what's important about that is that it gives the district and the new employee time to make sure this is gonna be a good fit or not. Full three years probation is great, because you can work through it to see if this is gonna be a good fit or not. That one year quick, if you've been experienced five out of the last eight years in another public school district, you only get one year probation. Well, with the District of Innovation flexibility, we can add an extra year of probation in case we need it, just to make sure it's the right fit. We spend a lot of time making sure we have high-quality instructors hired into this district, and this gives us an opportunity to just make sure that that's the case. So we appreciate that. And then the last thing that was really helpful was a loophole that some other districts were able to find, and being part of this organization that we're a part of, we realized that we could take advantage of, which was, for districts our size, way back in the day, there was only people, healthcare providers were dropping us left and right. And it was really difficult for school districts our size to find a healthcare provider. And so the state scrambled at the state level and created something called TRS Active Care, which was meant to be the state medical, they partnered with Blue Cross, I think originally, went to Ed and inspected Blue Cross. But to give folks like us the opportunity to have them, who had insurance for your employees. But at that time, they said, once you're in, you can't get out. And so we got in because that's the only person, people we could get insurance with, but then we were locked in with them. And we had to compete with bigger districts like Northeast, Northside, SAISD, they were able to get different kinds of insurance, and so that's always difficult. Well, with the District of Innovation, we were able to get an alternative medical insurance for our employees this year that had a substantially lower premium. Now, not everybody jumped over into that, there were still several folks in active care, but it was a great opportunity for us to provide that to our employees, because we hear time and time again that healthcare premiums are something that's really hard for teachers. And so that gave us flexibility. Next slide. And so the statutory process is lengthy, those of you who've been around have seen this, the new brokers might not have seen this, but the process begins way back in March when I do a public kind of calling, you guys have the resolution, to let the public know that we're looking into this. Then I meet with our district site-based team, which is called the District Education Advisory Council, the DEAC, and we actually go through the exact plan, it's the same plan we had last time, we just updated it with dates. And everybody said, yes, unanimously, we want to proceed with it. That's the next step. And then we come back to you all for more formal hearings. I've had it posted on the website since April the nineteenth, so I've met that time commitment. And then after the debate board meeting, I sent a note to, no, not a note, an email to the commissioner saying, hey, our board officially said, we're interested in pursuing this, that's the last part of the process. Now, with your consideration, if you all approve, then I will now send another thing to the commissioner saying that our board has voted to re-up for another five years, and then it becomes official after that. Now, are there any questions about the District of Innovation?
We have heard about this a few times now, so most of it, I think I know, but on, on things like the class size waiver and certification, I think you were more specific about that one. Say, class size waiver, what we're voting on today when we approve this plan, the class size waiver is specific to Spanish immersion, right? I mean, in four years, you wouldn't be able to use our District of Innovation status to up the class sizes on other areas. Does that mean, is that correct, what we're voting on?
That is not correct, but let me specify.
Okay.
So what the state law says is that every class of fourth grade and under, if you exceed twenty-two, you have to submit paperwork to the state to say, we need a waiver from that rule about twenty-two. So it's important to know, before we even did this, that in, this is all throughout the state of Texas, every district that had a class of fourth grade or below that was over twenty-two, had to submit a paperwork to the state. It didn't stop anybody from doing it, they did it, you just had to submit stuff to the record of how many classes below, fourth grade or below were over twenty-two. Typically, in our situation, we were the only ones to be built to be over twenty-two explicitly with Spanish immersion, but it doesn't mean we couldn't somehow. Now, I want to remind everybody what we build our class sizes on. So at Kinder, we go eighteen to one, first grade is nineteen to one, second grade is twenty to one, third grade is twenty-one to one, and fourth grade is twenty-two to one. And so we already build in below that twenty-two anyway, and so it would be an odd instance in which anything would go over that.
Thank you, that does answer, so the plan, what we're giving permission for is broader than what you intend
That is correct.
to use it for, but we are, we are giving approval for something that, you know, it gives, it would give you that opportunity. Okay, that makes sense.
That's correct.
Then what about for secondary, it doesn't?
No, yeah, statute is only about fourth and below.
Got it.
Like in other words, say, so, so the statute says the after-fourth grade women, there's no limits, and so.
The District of Innovation plan does not have anything to do with class size waivers for older?
Yeah, class size waivers do not exist statutorily beyond fourth grade.
There's not a class size mandate beyond fourth grade. So historically, we have only used this provision for our immersion classes.
Right.
But like Frank's saying, you know, down the road, if we had one go over, we wouldn't have to go through the paperwork trail, but we haven't used that. The intent of it is to use it for language programs.
That's all that answers the questions I have.
Those are your questions?
Were there any comments since the posting? Any comments from parents in the public or anything since it was posted?
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the resolution to renew District of Innovation's status?
Yes, sir.
David, do I have a second? Carrie? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We meet to two-thirds, we pass. Thank you. Well done, Frank.
I'll send a note to the manager.
Yeah, I know.
I mean, finally.
Can you put that next one to do?
Yeah.
David, one more.
It's time to start over again.
Five months of work. Okay, next, we are gonna move on to item number five, the consent agenda. These are items that are considered routine by the board or have been previously reviewed and discussed in prior meetings, and that we therefore enact in one motion. Is there anything that any of the board members would like to remove from the consent agenda to consider as an item on the regular agenda? No? Okay.
I will let you know, before we move from the consent, is that you have an updated Region Twenty commitment form that was missing our co-op counselor services. So in your original board book, you had everything except for the counseling service co-op that's added there for your review, so that's something we've used in the past. It supports our counselors with professional development, so.
Okay, and one thing worth noting is we have a total of sixty thousand, more than sixty thousand dollars in donations, and in particular, two of them, thirty-seven thousand dollar donation from Edward Hart for the Alamo Heights High School baseball team as a result of baseball derby. That's a pretty outstanding fundraising. And also, we want to acknowledge the donation from the Alamo Heights Junior School PTO nearly twenty thousand dollars for curriculum grants. That kind of support is much needed and very, very much appreciated. Anything else? Anyone want to pull anything? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Lisa? Second. Brian? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed. We've got a board member committee report, but it's not on here, so we don't have to do that. There are no business recommendations to address, so we are up to section eight, calendar review.
Okay, and Alicia is gonna project the calendar for you. Coming up next week, we have our second Lunch and Learn for our new trustees as part of orientation, and so that's on Tuesday, June twenty-second, and Lisa will be there for that. And we'll, we'll talk about the work that we've done with grading, kind of bring everybody up to speed. Wednesday, all trustees are invited to come to a morning meeting where we go through, invited, do you like that? Invited to.
Yeah, I like that.
We just need some more focused time with you all about budget. Prior, typically, we don't have that meeting, we wait until August to do it, but we need to especially look at some salary considerations then as well. Okay, I got stumped there. What was the July first? Special call board meeting on July first is the, it's the personnel. We always hold that in July, it seems early to me, but we always hold it prior to the last, the date for resignation, so we get our final swoop of hires in. And so that will be a twenty-minute meeting, it will just be, but I need to make sure, most trustees, we just need four of you, so I'd love.
Do we have four people?
I will not be here, I won't be here.
I'll be here, I'll be here.
One, two, three.
I, I can come.
You can come?
Okay.
It's almost my birthday, so I want a cake.
I, I won't be here till January.
If we get four on that day, we're good. We, that's pretty much how we roll on that July meeting, because it's just to let people in and out of their house, so. And we close, y'all, our offices close for a whole week out of the year.
You know what, we didn't do that last year, so I don't think we should continue that.
Yeah, we didn't do that last year.
No.
No, most of us worked, most of us kept working. All right, and we host our third Lunch and Learn for our new trustees on Tuesday, August third, and that's we're gonna go over community-based accountability, and Stacy, still able to be there, okay. GNP, this is early, y'all remember that we moved up the typical flow of our morning meeting and our regular called meeting, because we need to make the decision about calling for the TRE, the tax ratification election by that, I think it's the twelfth or twelfth, so we had to move up the regular board meeting, so we moved up the GNP, so just make sure. I'll continue to shoot you those dates and the updates, regular board meeting on the twelfth. So we're gonna have a lot, we're gonna see each other a lot that, that week.
Is there time on the twenty-third to go snoop around at the other facility?
The twen, the June twenty-third meeting?
After the, it may be too long, maybe that's more of a, I'm just talking about.
We could, I wanted to tour you the athletic complex, yeah. Do y'all want to do that that day?
That's the day, I mean, I have to cut out, that's the day I told you I'll, I'll be there, it's just, it may only be an hour.
Okay, let me see.
But you guys can do that.
Which day are we talking about?
The twenty-third.
Well, I, I just throw that out there, you know.
So if we don't do it then, Carrie, we will do it on August eleventh at the board team building, that's what we did last year, we kind of.
I have a tour of the twenty-third with the mule, so. I don't even know, my wife told me that, is that not the same thing?
I don't have a tour done, so you're in a special touring group.
With the mule, something.
Okay, I don't, okay. And then finally, y'all, what Bobby mentioned, I want to make sure, you got this in your folder last Wednesday, but Go Public is sponsoring another breakfast for trustees and communication, and that's next, that's June twenty-fourth at eight o'clock at Northside. And so if you feel like you can attend with me, would you please email Alicia? And so it's June twenty-fourth, eight AM, it'll be eight to nine-thirty, you've attended with me in the past, some of you have been able to.
Those are cool, you can go to.
Where is it again?
It's at, it's in Northside, I don't have the specific, but I will send it to you once you.
But all I have to say about that meeting is it's in the same place it was last time, get there early, because it's a hike.
That was Judson, do you remember?
Oh, my gosh, yes.
That was at Judson's.
Last year.
It was so far from the parking lot to the thing, that I missed part of it.
So.
The summer?
So it's not there this time?
It's not there.
Okay.
June twenty-fourth.
June twenty-fourth, eight AM, if you can go, you're gonna email Alicia. If you would like to, we can meet at central office and I can drive us. Oh, yeah, I could let you drive my car. That would be better. Okay, any questions about calendar?
Okay, that sounds good, all right. Section nine, your superintendent's communication.
You mean to disconnect. There you go. Ninety-eighty-eight.
Thank you. Right?
Thank you, sir.
So, believe it or not, there's a lot that has taken place since we've met last in May. There's a lot of June updates that I have for you. Every meeting that we have had together since we opened our schools, we spent time going over our progress indicators. And I'm not gonna get into many of the details around this, but I do want to highlight for you some areas of academic focus that we are looking at as part of our comprehensive needs assessment. And so you all know that we've tracked active cases, we've been open summer school last two weeks, and we have not had any active cases. Great news, we track our zip code data, we track our teachers and their vaccination. We had a partnership tonight with the National Guard, and we had great turnout for people in the community that wanted to come and get vaccinated, so that's exciting. You know, we tracked the number of students that were in heights at home versus face-to-face, we tracked attendance over the whole year, had great attendance because of the way we were able to provide families with some flexibility in submitting forms and engaging on Google Classroom. This just tracked the absentee forms, but I do want to sit in the student achievement piece, because it sets us up for our goal setting and intervention needs for next year. And so we have tracked over the course of the year, all of the the failure rates, both the junior school and high school, and you can see that those failure rates are higher than they've been before, but they have decreased. decreased over the course of the year. And you can also see the comparison that we've tracked between students who were not making academic progress in the heights at home setting versus face-to-face. So again, just, you know, put that in context, we had fewer, fewer students in heights at home as the year progressed, but you can see that the failure rate maintain was pretty stable.
And when you say failure rate?
Failing one or more courses.
So that's the percentage of students who fail one or more courses? So like sixteen percent of our students failed one or more courses?
At the end of the first nine weeks. So didn't fail the course, failed that, you know.
They were failing at the time?
Right.
Okay.
And we also got just recently preliminary STAR scores. Now, again, I'm sharing all of this with you just to say, like, this is the entry point that we start getting all the data from the year so that we can make those academic goals as we walk through those campus checkups for next year. And so you can see, I wonder how large that was. Just the percentage of students based on two thousand nineteen versus twenty-twenty-one, because you remember, we didn't have STAR data last year. And so this is the percentage of students at approaches or higher. And approaches is meeting standard.
Wow.
So you can see that, you know, there's some gaps, but there are surprisingly non-gaps as well. And so, and then this is end of course.
Elementary. It's elementary, right? ES.
Oh, elementary school math, elementary school reading, yep. Junior school math, junior school reading.
The junior school math, like, wow, that surprises you.
Isn't that surprising?
I'm so surprised by that.
What's the orange? Nineteen?
The orange is nineteen.
In the, in the.
Blue is twenty-twenty-one this year.
Algebra one, which I struggled a little bit in bio.
So Algebra one, you all know, it's been something we've been talking about over time now. But I continue to be hopeful that that block schedule is going to help us fix because we can double block kids into that course who need that acceleration.
So what's the difference between a real score and a pre-limiter's?
They, it only includes the, well, no, here, it comes down to online administration. So it's just kids that took it online. There are kids that were able to take it off, not online, the paper pencil because of accommodations. And so this is just the online testing.
It's like the early focus then.
It is. But I'm going to tell you, that's few, those are so minimal in our district, but there's not going to be that much change. Yeah. And then just a quick glance at some preliminary college career military readiness scores. They look at SAT. Now, our, our data will not come to us until August. So this is twenty-twenty SAT exam data. And you can just see that we are above, and we have been above the state, above the national mean score, and above the benchmark score. This is a bit of a celebration here. I'm going to try to zoom into this. But our mean score, our composite mean score on ACT is just trending, continues to trend upwards, which is a celebration, especially with some of the challenges that we're facing. And then you can also see this PSAT score.
So how does, how do those PSAT and SAT roughly compare to past years? Do you have that coming up?
I don't have that tonight. I don't. But we definitely look at that as part of that pillar one when we're setting our goals around student achievement in C-Bass. That's something we look at every year. I'm not going to go through college. But I do want you to look at this because this kind of shows some of the needs that we feel like, A, we're addressing right now in summer school by offering more students opportunity to remediation in summer school, but also needs as we move forward into next year as far as the screener data beginning, middle, and end of year. And so this is incorrect here. This, we're going to, we can give Jimmy Walker, you know, a hard time for not being here tonight and making one mistake in her life. This is nineteen-twenty data. But as you look at it, beginning of year literacy and math, middle of year literacy and math, and end of year literacy and math. And so we just have some targeted areas of need that you see highlighted here in yellow that we will meet through intervention.
So with that nineteen-twenty meaning while everyone's shut down at home, they were doing that much higher than they are a year later?
Maybe?
Because everybody got a hundred.
Because I can see Jimmy, I mean, she wouldn't have given, I can see her giving us the last normal year there. And that's, that would be a big drop.
You know what, Stacy, I have to be on record loud and clear on the microphone. Jimmy did not make a mistake. You were totally right. Because here's what happened. We did beginning, you tweeted out to her. She's in Mexico. You let her know, I said.
I'm live streaming.
Nice. Because she had to go round and round about not wanting to admit mistakes. So I'll go ahead and tell her that. We did, that year of closure, we did beginning of the year assessments, and we did the middle of the year assessments, but we never came back around to the end of the year. So this is a different comparison. And so, again, just kind of helps us position for what intervention needs that we have. And so I didn't want to have a superintendent update and not review all the data that we're looking at. But again, that just situates us as part of that district improvement planning process. And so we have targeted areas of focus at the district level that the campus is looking at as well, moving forward with their, with district improvement plans and campus improvement plans. And, you know, we shared this graphic with y'all a couple months ago just to help frame the fact that the profile of a learner anchors all of our, our vision work, right? We move next into the accountability piece, which is our C-Bass, our seven pillars for community-based accountability. There are key questions that help us target our improvement efforts around those different pillars, and that's that third column. There's a strategic lens that's laid over top of that with those four goal areas. We have our areas of focus for district improvement plan, and our campuses will work on that. We'll present that in July. That is always part of the learning walks that we take you on. We have them kind of highlight what their areas of focus are academically. In each one of those pillar areas, that kind of frames those work and the accountability piece for that. So, and so we have work to do. We are, we are rolling up our sleeves. We have a leadership summit that takes place at the very end of July where we share out the work that's taking place for the campus and the goal areas moving forward. Just some continued updates. We are engaged in working through some drafts of our S R three fund plans. You all know that we had to post the opportunity for public comment on our website. We've done that. We have gotten some feedback back on that, just what areas of prioritization our community would like us to consider. We did spend some time with our District Education Advisory Council, a subgroup who meets about federal funds, and they met to provide some funding. And so we've got a draft plan in place and shared, you know, one iteration with you all. But the plan is a four-year plan, so it's how we're going to use this money from twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-four, understanding that that money goes away after twenty-twenty-four. So whatever we, you know, put into place is not necessarily something that's going to be sustainable. And so there is a priority in our plan to reimburse expenses for us to open our doors this past year. And so there will be a chunk of that money that, that off the top goes to reimbursement, academic intervention, summer academic programs, student wellness. So my plan at this point is to have that plan ready for presentation to you all at our August meeting. So continue to work through that. Summer school is up and running. We're in week two. I am celebrating high attendance at our summer school. I had a superintendent meeting this morning, and we all compared notes about how well summer school is being attended everywhere. And I'm going to tell you, I mean, we're in, we're in the ninety percent at all levels. Our credit recovery at the high school is not as high. It's about seventy percent right now, but still, when I heard the comparison where other people are getting kids re-engaged in schools, I'm celebrating. So we have a hundred and seventy-five students who are in our early Spanish literacy grades K one and two. You all know that we went to continuous learning. Our language program students were at a disadvantage because they didn't have the exposure to Spanish language throughout the day. And so we knew, we anticipated that that was going to be a big area of focus. And so we invited all of them to Spanish literacy summer school. We have a hundred and sixty students in remediation enrichment in our pre-K through five. And you all remember that we are only required to offer the bilingual summer school, but we always have offered the pre-K through five. And so it is going to be nice to offset some of that with the SR funds because, again, we're including more kids. We have a hundred students who are at the junior school for credit recovery remediation, fifty at the high school for credit recovery, forty-nine in end-of-course preparations, and we have two hundred and seventy students who are taking, we call it acceleration, but they're getting high school credit, you know, during the summer. So we have a lot going on summer school-wise. And we are all teeing up, I mean, right now, rolling up our sleeves into just the planning for next year. You all know that this is the big hiring time for us. I'm excited to talk to you about personnel tonight, that we've got some great hires coming on board. But our principals are pretty consumed with that right now just because of that July deadline for resignations. We're working hard to get people in place. We have a big commitment around professional development for our teachers. I shared, Carly's the only one in the audience here, but I've shared with our trustees all of the PD that we stand up as a district, our teacher leaders stand up, our administrators stand up, and we've got lots of participation in that. But I thought it would be interesting for me to share with you some of the requirements that the state dictates for our teachers. There's over seven hours of required training that our teachers have to go through in the summer week. Well, and they don't have to do it in the summer. They have to do it on their own times. They could do it on a weekend. They could do it after contract time. But we've, Frank Stanich has worked to stand up an online platform where they're taking classes like Bloodborne Pathogens, Bullying, Common Illness Prevention, Conflict Management, Student-to-Student Cyberbullying, Cybersecurity Training, Health Emergencies, Seizures, Human Trafficking, Title IX Compliance, Suicide, Trauma-Informed Approach Part One and Part Two, and our Alma Heights ISD Employee Handbook. So I just think it's important that you all know how much our teachers do in the summer as far as their professional development efforts. All right. We also are continuing to work through registrations on all of our campuses, class placements, schedules at our junior school and our high school. And we did come to you all last week and share just that targeted communication plan that, that we're trying to stand up. Once the schedule planning is done and once back to school fine-tuned details are done, we are planning on a three-week communication blitz, what I'm calling it, where we come from the district side, and we have some videos that are going out, and we offer campus coffee chats with principals to kind of follow up on what that translates into on the campuses. And so we're planning on that, that very last week of July, and then into August, those next two weeks. And our principals will host an update at our next board meeting about the finalized plans around the block schedule for you as well. So now we get into legislative update, and there's a lot here. And so what I share with you as far as, at this point, you know, the session has closed, and there is a ton of bills that have been promoted, and there are some that have not. So I'm going to try to just highlight those that are on my radar or that will have implications for us in the district. It goes to the governor, right? And then after that, it goes to TEA for some regulations and some implementation. And then it goes to TASB, and TASB then turns it to us for recommended policies. So we've got a ways to go as far as the timeline for all of this, but.
At some point, aren't we supposed to go to training on it? Isn't there a required training for us?
There is a required legislative, yeah. So there's, we can, you know, do, let you do that online. You can do it through Summer Leadership Institute. We could do it at TASB next year. You've got a ways to go before you can get. Yeah. So just some of the bills that were passed that are on my radar, the first of which is the House Bill Three cleanup bill. And it guarantees the funding of House Bill Three, and so that's good news. For us, it does restore the gifted and talented allotment that was taken away. It's, it's a decreased allotment than what it had always been, but it does reinstate that. It also allows for adjustments to dyslexia grants and trainings. It modifies the CTE allotment for small and mid-sized districts, which is good for us. And it does promote a higher weight for a higher level of CTE courses. And so you know that we've been working hard to kind of grow and align our pathways through CTE to allow those higher level courses, and we would get funding for that. And the big celebration is that it does allow the tuition allotment to continue. And so I.
It's all limited?
I'm sorry?
They didn't limit it. At one point, you were afraid they were going to.
Yeah. So it, we had great conversations about it on the House side. When it went to the Senate side, I wasn't being, we were not gaining any traction as far as conversation around that. Stacy and Carrie both engaged with Senator Campbell around it. And I actually got some, some good conversation time with her, I think, as a result of that, and celebration all around on that. So the next one is the House Bill Forty-five Forty-five, which is the accountability bill. And so this just, for us, it does not require us, it, I'm sorry, if a student does not pass an assessment in grade three through eight, they're entitled to a committee meeting in a certain level of teacher designation. And so they're entitled to a teacher and a teacher incentive allotment, or they're able to choose their teacher that they would want to have. So they're able to have choice in this. We'll see how that all pans out. Teacher's able to say, well, I think this teacher would be better.
Say that again?
Yeah.
Yeah. So if a student does not pass assessment in grades three through eight, they're entitled to a teacher who's at the teacher incentive allotment as a recommended teacher, or they're allowed to choose the teacher that they'd like to be in their class.
Child gets to choose the teacher.
Well, the parent, yeah. I mean, be joining it. That was surprising that it. And.
Yeah, how's that going to work?
Yeah, how's that going to work? We're going to wait to see how that.
What if everyone picks the same teacher?
The other thing in here, which is a celebration, is that there, there was no bonuses added to STAR achievement for schools. You know, that was something that, that we spoke out about against statewide as being detrimental to the whole process. And curriculum and instruction highlighted here is that House Bill Thirty-nine Seventy-nine, the Anti-Critical Race Theory bill. And so there's going to be a lot of details that come down the pike from that. But it does say that they're requiring some additional details in the TEES related to certain subjects. It does say that teachers will not be compelled to discuss current events, and if they do, they should present multiple points of view without giving difference to any one perspective. And employees can opt out of trainings that are connected to racial, sexual superiority, which is not critical race theory. We'll see how that all pans out.
Racial, sexual superiority?
Uh huh. Those are the words in here from Bear, Bear County Education.
Well, and Dana, while you're covering that, I think anyone who's still listening, I mean, having reviewed our policy on, you know, we have policies about dealing with controversial topics in the classroom, and, and you can remind us of the exact language, but Alma Heights already had a policy in place that if you're covering a controversial topic, you are required to share both sides and invite conversation on both sides. So just, you know, that's, we're going to be dealing with that specific bill, but in our district, we have a pretty, you know, a pretty clear policy in place on how to handle topics like that.
Appreciate you bringing that up.
Yeah. And aren't we doing some special professional development on teaching and handling contentious topics?
The training is all around the policy.
Training, yeah.
Just to kind of refresh folks' way.
Yep. So we're ahead of the legislature.
Of course.
And how is that?
Yeah.
Good luck.
Well, I'm just asking, is it a he says, she says?
Well, so Dana can answer it more specifically, but what Brian's referring to is that's exactly what they're working on is, is sort of the training. The policy exists, and there has been training in the past, but trying to kind of re-up or tweak the training to work with the teachers on how to follow the policy because it's definitely not clear for any human being to deal with a controversial topic, how you do that well, right? And so I think you all are working on that.
Right. So it's kind of twofold as far as the accountability piece. You know, it requires a parent coming forward and letting us know if there's something that's being covered in the class that they feel like is outside that lane, so administrator can follow up on it. And it also requires our administrators to be present in the classroom, right, and present for planning conversations when curriculum departments meet. So, but yes, we did that for everyone on that April twenty-fourth Professional Development Day. And so two other areas of focus under curriculum and instruction is the House Bill Fourteen Sixty-eight, which does not allow us to offer remote option. We knew that already. And I will tell you, there's conversation that in this special session, they might revisit that. We had two students, two families, who said that they would like to have that option provided to them, and said we're going to work through some accommodations through five oh four because of their health considerations. And then finally, this is a big one that I went on your radar because you're going to hear talk about it, but it's House Bill Five Forty-seven, which allows UIL, I'm sorry, yes, UIL participation for homeschool students.
Did that pass?
It passed, but it gives us the discretion of allowing it or not allowing it. And so I will tell you, the conversation with the superintendents all around the board this morning was that not one district in our Bear County is going to do that. And so that's nice to have that, you know.
Till that homeschooler is seven foot three and ten foot three.
Right. So I do have it there.
Crossing the microphone.
Well, and didn't, didn't we already, I don't know if it was a formal policy, but didn't we already announce publicly and agree that our position on homeschool, to the extent we had it, was that they were not going to be considered UIL? I mean, that's what Jimmy shared in her presentation.
So you're talking about heights at home. We, we said that any of our heights at home students.
Oh, this is homeschool.
This is homeschool, but we don't even get any money.
Yeah, your kids are at the house and you're teaching.
But yet your kids can saw the community reports.
And you're the one.
Well, Dana, in my mind, I was thinking heights.
The parent is giving the grade too, right? There's grade eligibility for participation. And so the parent's giving the grade. And so, the parent's giving the grade, the parent's determining eligibility.
Oh, gosh.
And so, this, this took some, I don't know, that's some traction. So it is interesting just to look at what did not pass, because a lot of this is celebration. And so, the, I came to you frustrated about the SR three restrictions, as far as needing to reserve some of it for fund balance. That did not pass, virtual instruction, I explained that. Transgender sports participation restrictions, you know, got a lot of traction, a lot of talk, and that did not pass. Fund balance restrictions, I was, I came to you frustrated about that at one point, asked to engage. Assessment-based funding, reduction in required assessments, there was a big push to reduce the number of state assessments, and that did not pass vouchers. And, and a celebration is this taxpayer-funded lobbying limitation, because as you all know, we partner very closely with Kristi Raum at Texas School Coalition. She was very instrumental in getting us the audience that we needed to get with Senator Campbell. Also, Bear County Education Coalition, Julia Grisard works for us as well. And so, TASSA works on our behalf, on behalf of all public schools, and so, there was a lot of worry that that was going to pass. Thanks. So just some celebrations to highlight for you all. Since May, we had a great celebration yesterday that our, the class of twenty twenties Rocket was cleared for launch. So we had students who are in college right now came back to unveil their Rocket yesterday, and it was a, not yesterday, it was on Monday. And that's a huge celebration. Two of our campuses earned a National Promising Practices Award from Character dot org, Cambridge and the high school, for a couple of different initiatives that are taking place there. Our Spurs dance team earned awards at their, their officer camp, they earned most spirited, the team of the day, and most disciplined team. We had fifteen participants, actually, I'm wrong, I think we had twelve participants at the Martha Spoor Writer Workshop that was held this past week, and that's always a celebration. Partner with the foundation on that, and get to celebrate on Friday evening their work from the week. And then a last celebration, y'all, we have three hundred and eight athletes at the high school enrolled and participate in MIT. And we have a hundred and fifty-six at the junior school. So we've got a lot going on, I feel like, feels good, kind of feels back to normal in a real way, so.
I'm asking, everybody's smiling, it's so great.
That's right.
To see them smile, I'm again...
Can I ask two questions?
Yes.
So one of the speakers tonight brought up the AP report, and I believe Dr. Walker is going to dive into that. There seems to be an implication, the rankings do more to a lack of focus on education, on, on social, emotional. As she completed her review of kind of, I remember the deeper dive, what, really getting statistics about how that report, or how they did their statistics.
On initial glance, it's based on low and of course percentage passing.
Can you, I don't, I don't know what you're talking about, Brian.
The US, the US annual report, right?
So we're in the top ten percent of AP scores, and we're in the bottom ten percent of end-of-course percent passing. So, that's kind of the, the, we'll have her talk to you when she does.
I, I've brought that a lot, I would love to have a good answer. I don't know the answer to it.
I thought there was also something about the AP scores.
Our AP scores are really good, but our end-of-course scores are not good, and the way US...
And the end-of-course scores count thirty percent of the...
And then wasn't it also like socio-economically disadvantaged? There was a...
There may have been, Brian, let, let me have her do a little bit more digging about that.
That'd be great, just to... Cause it puts more to it than just...
But it, it's also a big area of improvement that we need to figure out, you know, so I'm not like top dancing, yeah.
Yeah. And then the SR, sort of the SR input from the parents, how's that, and sorry, I don't know, but how's that word? Like, how broadly are we asking for their input? Is it like, hey, how do you want to suspend this five and eight hour?
Yeah, it's pretty much broad, like that, yes. And we have had over a hundred responses that Jimmy's kind of tracking, and you know, she'll thematically look at that, and what was it? She'll spend some time in there, so.
I was only jumping to say that whenever Jimmy shares with us about that, I know she has some in the past, but she could give us the historical look, because someone was saying that we had dropped. And I didn't, I don't know, I just would like to see that, or is it dropping, or is it just that we've always been at that rank?
Or is it a recalculation, or is it, are the statistics the same, their grading criteria the same?
Right.
I think their weighting had changed of the various things, but yeah.
I mean, the Google search didn't answer the question for me, so if Jimmy has better access than I do, I would appreciate it.
And I thought there was something about our eighth graders taking AP algebra, and that not getting calculated in, or something that...
Yeah, but I, when I look at that, I think, that's interesting. So that happens at Ames too, and Ames is in at the same place we are, you know? So I, I don't know that that's worth hanging our hat on, but it's worth, I'll have her dig a little bit more on it, yep.
Well, and since you also mentioned, Dana, the master schedule, and the principals working on that, and since we obviously had some comments on that today too. You know, I, I know you guys are, I know you, you guys are speaking to these parents, I've spoken to some of them. But, you know, they raised some really good specific data points, especially about the missed class time in those last periods. And so, you know, so, since you brought up the topic, I know that y'all can go back to this and maybe re-analyze it as needed, if there needs to be some shuffling done. You know, it, it does raise the question whether one team needs to bear that, right? Maybe the football team should be second to sixth, and, you know, the volleyball teams don't need to travel, you know, have to travel farther. Or, you know, which teams can better do that, or can they all be together? So I'm not going to have the answers.
Why can't we all just be at the end of the day? I mean, why can't all athletic to be at the end of the day, like, I know...
Because of the facility use, the gym sharing. Like, if it rains outside, you have to pull, you have to stagger athletic period, so. But I will, I'll, I mean, we are definitely listening and making tweaks on that. It's interesting because, you know, there weren't decisions necessarily that have been made to this point that we've been able to communicate out, which is frustrating, you know? But, but it, this takes, every year, when you do a straight eight, it takes us until mid-July to get the schedule set, so.
It, it's hard when people are jumping to conclusions when we're still in the process, but we did that all summer, so.
Well, some of those parents started with one understanding, but they have spoken to us or to the administration, and now they have a better understanding. I think what they were saying wasn't inaccurate, it's just that, you know, there, it's, it's, it's a hard thing to figure out the logistics, and the principals I know are working on that. And there's the question of, you know, whether we want, you know, we are losing some academic time in exchange for extra athletic time every week. And so, is that the exchange we want to make right now? And is that, you know, so there's, there's things that, it seems like we're making progress on the conversation.
And I'm hopeful that we can address all this in committee, because I feel like we're kind of winding off these items for super communication. They're very valid concerns, a whole lot we've got to talk about, but just stick to where we are.
That was probably my role.
That's good, smiling.
Sit down, you're in the last seat.
Okay.
Well, yeah, I, I agree, so we don't need to get to this. But, but we were talking about the teachers on the slides, and what they're doing in the summer. And so, my only concern or question would have been, because I think you mentioned seven hours of training for Bloodborne Pathogens, blah, blah, blah. At what point are they going to get a real good refresher for us about the block schedule and how to teach to it? Is it going to be on the fly after we start school, or is there set aside time to do that?
Yeah, so some do it naturally better than others already, we know that. There are some that need summer attention and have had conversations with... So all of the professional development that takes place in the summer is through a goal-setting process at the end of their year evaluation. And so, those that need to walk through that are walking through that this summer. But there will also be a reset for everybody when we get back in August as well, we have a whole week at the time, so. But they know this is coming, and you know that they, they're, they're in preparation for it, so, it's a good question.
All right, thanks, Dana. All right, before we move into our next items, if there are no objections, we will take a short break before entering into executive session as per Texas Government Code, Section five fifty-one point oh oh one.